Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Morning.
I would like to remind everyone to please be sure that our cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order the Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you today for the blessings of life. We thank you for your blessings on this city. We just pray, God, your wisdom today on this council and the decisions they have to make that affect the constituents in their district. God, I pray for our mayor, his staff, and the entire employees of the city. God, thank you for the positions you've given us and the great responsibility we have. Pray that God will take those positions with great pride and that we'll do everything we can to help those who are in need. We just pray, God, that you'll continue to keep your hand on us as a city, that we'll keep our focus on you, and we'll give you the praise for all the good things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee work session and the council meeting that was held July 14th, January 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of January the 10th through the 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts. Proclamation.
Whereas northeast Alabama's success depends on every child succeeding and reaching their full potential in life, and these objectives are more easily met when young people possess a solid foundation of support that will help them become well-educated, confident, and productive citizens. Mentoring is a proven effective strategy that helps children and young adults by matching them with a caring, responsible adult who can provide guidance and direction. Mentors help build character, encourage success, boost confidence, lift expectations, and inspire young people to do their part. Whereas mentors serve as friends, role models, teachers, and resources of stability and support during a critical time in a child's life. Research shows that mentoring has beneficial and long-term effects on youth by increasing their academic engagement and decreasing their likelihood of substance abuse and risky behavior. Mentoring strengthens community economic and well, social well-being by helping youth fulfill their potential while helping maintain healthy families and promoting more vibrant communities. Hundreds of local children are in need of a caring adult mentor in their lives, and closing this mentoring gap will make more investment, partnerships, and volunteers who are ready to make a difference in a child's life. National Mentoring Month is an opportunity to raise public awareness on the importance of mentoring, recognize the dedicated individuals who service mentors, and encourage more citizens to help build a brighter future for Alabama's youth. Therefore, I, Stromer, Gaten, Mayor of the City of Gaston, hereby proclaim the month of January 2020 as National Mentoring Month in the City of Gaston, and recognize the importance of mentoring and encourage all our local citizens to volunteer to service mentors in their communities.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this recognition of National Mentoring Month. Big Brothers Big Sisters has been creating and supporting children through one-to-one mentoring relationships for 38 years, and if it were not for the support of our community and the city and the mayor, we would not be here. We've had a lot of supports through grants and United Way. On average, we serve around 200 kids a year. Last year, we served 240, and we matched 190. We are always looking for volunteers, and we're grateful for the support we've had. National Mentoring Month is a great time to thank our volunteers for their service, sharing their time and their talent to our program youth, and also to ask people to consider volunteering, doing something big, and helping defend potential in a child and becoming a big brother or big sister. Our services are free. We do not charge dues or fees, but we are a tax exempt nonprofit, and so our donors and our volunteers are what keep us going all these 38 years. We are having our annual Bowl for Kids' Aid that's coming up February 28th and 29th, and we want to encourage participation from the community. And I just want to thank you again, Mayor Gaten, for this recognition. Thank you very much. Okay, good.
I would like to say just a little bit on the mentoring. We had the Boys and Girls Club annual dinner the other night, and in the old days, you could say it was really a throw-down. But we had so many people there who are supporting the Boys and Girls Club, just as the mentoring here, and it all sort of goes hand in hand. The more kids it can be reached, the better chance they have of being successful in life. And I can tell you firsthand from my wife, who is a counselor, I won't say exactly where, but in Etowah County, and she tells me things sometimes that's just practically unbelievable. Kids sleeping in a coal house. If you don't know what that is, it's a little thing like a barn where they used to put coal, but it's empty. They, you know, they don't come to work. I mean, they don't come to school on time. Parents don't bring them on time. They have to have tribunal where they get the parents in and talk to, you know, and parents, if you got kids, you gotta step up and make them available to everything out there because it is so important. The more they learn, the better off they'll be the rest of their life. Thank you.
We have an ordinance that amends the City Code, Section 46, 152, and this amends the smoking ordinance to allow operation of a hook can bar, and this ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussions? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item, this is a time and place as advertised to collect, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering the abatements of nuisance on property at 1604 Litchfield Avenue in District 1. The last known owners are State of Alabama Redemption right of Julia Jimmerson and her heirs, deceased possible heirs being Mary Jimmerson, Julie, Deirko, Benjamin Jimmerson, James Jimmerson, Willie Jimmerson, and Walter Jimmerson. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? All right, if you'll come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Mary Jimmerson. I'm Julia Jimmerson's oldest daughter. I don't stay there, but my address is 1609 MacDowell Street, Apartment 10. And the people that was, that was standing there is my two brothers, Walter Jimmerson and Willie Jimmerson. So I'm here to see what I can do or what's supposed to be done.
Okay, did you, did you receive a notice or did anyone in the family receive a notice concerning the property?
I don't know of anything about the other people receiving a letter or a notice, but I did.
Okay.
I received this letter.
Is that about coming here today?
Yes.
Okay, well, did there, was there a notice concerning the nuisance of the house as far as what needed to be, to be done to get it up to standards? Do you know if there, did you know of anything where a notice was sent concerning the nuisance of the property and what needed to have been done?
No.
You didn't receive any?
I just received just this letter.
Okay, what address did it come to?
1609 MacDowell Street, Apartment 10.
That was the address that that notice came to?
Right.
Okay.
Council President, if I may, are your brothers still living in this condemned house?
Not that I know of.
Usually, once we condemn a house, Mr. Harbison, or somebody's department goes by and they put a condemned sign on the house, you usually have 120 days to bring the house up to code, so you hadn't been by in five, four, five months?
I hadn't checked on anything. I just got this letter.
Okay. Okay. We'll let, okay.
Madam President, I'm sorry, just one question. Is your desire to save the property?
Yes.
Okay, well, obviously, we haven't, normally what'll happen next is you'll have a seat, and Mr. Harbison will come up here, and he'll show us some pictures of the property and kind of what the current state of it is.
That's right.
And then the only recourse that we would have is we may give you some sort of an extension period of, say, 30 days, but you would have to be ready to make the repairs and bring the home back up to livable standard, and having not seen those yet.
Our records, we had a title search on this property. It shows that the property has been sold to the State of Alabama for taxes.
Okay.
Have you settled up? Have you redeemed the property?
No, I don't even know how much, nothing is.
All right, so you don't know how much it's gonna cost to redeem the property, do you?
No. I need to know all of that.
All right, well, those are county records. I mean, those are, because what happens is when we, when the building department goes out there, they look at the tax records to see who to notify.
Right.
And you weren't listed on the tax records. The State of Alabama was listed on the tax records because they had purchased the property for taxes some years ago. Apparently, did you have relatives that lived there that passed?
My mother, she was there. She passed.
Right, and then probably no one thought to pay the taxes, typically what happens. And so that's who we notify, because that's the only one listed on the tax records. And then we, when we have this hearing, we have, we do a title search, which would go down to, a lawyer goes down to the record room and actually checks title to the property, which reflects your potential interest as well as your brother's, and that's how you got notified.
Okay.
All right, so there's issues about, is the house worth buying back for taxes, and is it gonna be worth spending the money to fix it up? So those are questions you're gonna need to answer.
Right.
You figure out, okay?
So.
Madam President, if I may, you said you hadn't been by and looked at the house four or five months, so you really don't know what the house is or how bad it is, so I don't, I don't say you really want to give it, to give you time since you don't really know how bad it is, you know?
I can, I can go look today because I thought maybe my brothers, they were keeping it up.
Yeah.
They were the ones that was staying in it.
Ms. Jimmerson, and just so you'll be, be clear, you have a couple of expenses that are in front of you right now.
Right.
The first one, obviously, is you have to get back in the title flow, or you or your family. In order to do that, you're gonna have to go to the county and redeem the property.
Right.
And that means paying whatever the back taxes are plus the interest to redeem the title.
Right.
So that's the first, the property, that's the first step. And then beyond that, then to Councilman Cannon's point, you're gonna have to look at the condition of the property and determine if, within a reasonable time, you can invest in the repairs to bring it back up to code.
Right.
So those are, those are two things that are in front of you that you, you know, that you should consider before, really, the council can do anything that would help.
Okay.
I guess what I'm trying to say, too, thank you, Councilman Williams, for kind of reading, where I'm saying, but what I don't want you to do is spend a lot of money on something, your money on something that might not be feasible to fix.
That's right.
In other words, I don't want you having to waste your money for something that maybe you're not, you know, you have the rest of the money to put in it, like it might cost you $15,000, I don't know. That's what, that's what my theory was, I didn't want you to have to waste your money.
Yeah, at some point, it doesn't make sense for you to fix it. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
If the house, if the most it's ever gonna be worth is, say, $25,000, and you're gonna have to pay $5,000 in back taxes and $20,000 to fix it, you, at best, you get your money back out of it, you know? At some point, it doesn't make sense because the house just won't be worth enough to justify the expense, so.
Okay, okay. All right, well, I mean, you can, that doesn't stop you from checking or anything, but we appreciate you.
And now we'll hear from Mr. Harbison.
All right, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, I am Brian Harbison. We filed this case in May of 2019. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
Where was the picture of in that room there? Is that a bunch of electrical wires that were hanging down?
Yes, yes, inside of the house is fairly rough. I didn't mention this, this house sits immediately adjacent to a church parking lot, and that's primarily where we're getting some calls and concerns about that the house being vacant, and I think people going in and out, so.
Ms. Jimmerson, in looking at the house, you know, I know some of my colleagues want me to give you 30 days, but they're not gonna, I mean, they're, I'm going to go ahead and abate it, but you still can check on it because you got to first redeem the property back yourself. They're not gonna run out there tomorrow and tear the house down. So if you, if you find out if you want to redeem it, and then go, you know, go from there, you always have an option of coming and talking to Mr. Harbison. But the history of not, not necessarily you, but the history behind people coming up here and saying that they're going to fix the house up is almost zero because the, we end up still having to abate it after 30 days. But I'm saying the first thing you need to do is to redeem the property back to yourself. So check on the taxes, but I'm going to go ahead and abate it today.
Yeah, Madam President, if I may, Mrs. Jimmerson, you know, and again, please understand, you're not alone with something like this. We see this a lot. You know, heir property that typically ends up in the possession of one or more heirs who sometimes aren't the most responsible of the remaining heirs, and so the taxes aren't maintained on the property. At some point, it gets sold at the courthouse steps for the taxes owed, and again, it happens a lot. And then the responsible heir, then, once informed about it, has to then come up, come back and clean up the issue. And it's a very common thing that happens. So again, I know I'm just restating what's already been said, but, you know, the first step is just to make sure that it's even worth you investing your hard-earned money and bringing it up to code. And if you determine that it's worth it, then you've got to go back and redeem it through the state and then start, then start the process from there. So we wish you, we wish you the best, and to Council President Toles' point, we're not gonna tear it down tomorrow, so you have time. But you really have to get to move, get busy on determining whether or not you want to spend money on it.
Okay.
Head of motion?
Second.
Yeah, second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
No action will be necessary regarding the resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at 1311 Good Year Avenue, and this is in District 2. The nuisance has been abated by the owner. Our next public hearing is a resolution or abatement of nuisance on property located at 304 East Chestnut Street in District 4, Eamon Salueman, Salueman Gaston Venture Incorporated, and the Nolan Company, the Nolan Company being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in May of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or abatement of nuisance on property located at 1126 South 11th Street in District 5, Anitra L. McLean and Vincent and Karen Labley being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution?
I'm sorry, you can come on up. Madam President, based on recent improvements and permits, we're asking this case to be tabled for 30 days.
Hello, my name is Anitra McLean. I own this property. I purchased it about a year ago. From the owner, which lived in it, and they stayed in it six, about six weeks afterwards, maybe eight, up to eight weeks afterwards. And when they moved out, I immediately put the power, water, everything in my name. Went and got a permit, and I'm working on, my permit was to, they were very nasty people. And the house was built in 1919, it still have the original plaster walls and the original wiring and plumbing. So what I'm doing is taking the walls out myself and then like save money, gonna do the wiring, which is next. I saved the money, I put roof on the house. I have pictures as well, only they said that they had broken windows. It does not have broken windows. They say need a front door. I'm not putting a front door until I renew the inside and get ready to move in, and they said the fence was falling down. I straightened up the fence, so it's, you know, I don't know what else I have to do in order to keep the, to let this come off, because if I purchased it and I'm trying to fix it up to move in it, to relocate home close to my parents, so I don't know what was going on before I purchased it or whatever, but I, if you look at the home, I have pictures as well of all the windows and doors, if y'all want to see that. I have the inside, it's a very stable home, hardwood floors, the reason I purchased it, and so I really don't know why.
You're, you're okay, Mr. Harbison, just.
Yeah, but 30 days, what I'm supposed to do in 30 days? I don't know what else to do, is what I'm asking. You know, you gave me the 30 days, but what else needs to be done? Because I have the pictures, like I said, what's on the form is incorrect because I don't have any broken windows, so that's a checkoff, and I don't, I don't need a front door because there's nothing wrong with the door, it has a lock, that's a checkoff. And the fence, I fixed the fence, it's not painted, but I'm, I want a brand-new fence, but I'm not gonna put the fence on until I move in.
Well, the more you improve, the more you will, but you know, you have to continuously improve, but the more you improve, then you'll be extended some time. We're not gonna, we're not going to tear it down.
I know, but my question is, what else do I need to do on outside? Because my, my main concern is the inside, so that I may move in.
Yeah, Mr. Harbison.
Check with Mr. Harbison.
He can help you with that.
He can help you with the outside, tell you what you need to bring up to standard.
And just to clarify, I want you to know, this is in my district. I've driven past this house for a decade, and it's been in really bad shape for a long, long time, so don't take this personal. This doesn't have anything to do with you.
Because they didn't do anything when other people were living there, is what I'm saying.
Ma'am, let me finish. Ma'am.
So I don't know, yeah.
What I'm telling you is this, don't take this personal. This doesn't have anything to do with you. This property has been a nuisance in this community for years and years and years, okay? Up to and including the individuals that you bought the property for. This isn't a personal attack on you, it's not a reflection of your work ethic or your ability to maintain a property. This is a formal civil process to where we have to go through check by check. If you say the windows aren't broken, there's a process where Mr. Harbison can come out and verify that the windows aren't broken. You know, these are things that are in our city code. It's not one person coming out there and making a judgment call based on your house, whether he likes you or whether you make good sweet tea or not. These, this is written in law, so it's applied the same to you as it is to anybody else. And if something's got to be fixed, according to the code, it has to be fixed. What just happened is Mr. Harbison just gave you, even though it may not have sounded like that, you were focused on the 30 days part, but what he just said was, let's table this. There's improvements going on over there, and as long as there's improvements going on, we'll keep kicking this can down the road. But when you stop making those improvements, we have to be in a position to where we can act on it because all the people who live around that property, whose property of value is affected by that house, when that house doesn't look good, everybody else's house around there's property values goes down. So the city has to keep in mind, every citizen, not just what's it impact on you, but what's the impact on the entire community. So that's the kind of stuff Mr. Harbison has to weigh every day when he's out there. So that's the kind of stuff Mr. Harbison has to weigh every day when he's out there making these evaluations. So just be patient and work with the system. They're not trying to make you spend money that you shouldn't have to spend. They're just trying to bring the nuisance back up to where it's a reputable piece of property in the community. So just continue to do the work that you're doing and Mr. Harbison, and work closely with Mr. Harbison, and I promise you, he's a reasonable person. You, you guys will get through this, and I'd love to see that house restored, it's beautiful, like you said, nineteen nineteen. I mean, thank you for taking the time and the hard work and your money to restore that house. And just work with the building department and realize they're not your enemy, they're going to help you. And you, and there's even some, some federal funding dollars that could potentially be available for some of these improvements if you own the home and you're residing in it. So all those are things that the city can help with, okay?
Okay, one more thing, I keep getting a notice about trash. Everyone come and dump their trash on side of the house, but I'm the one's getting, you know, citation or whatever it is, I've gotten three of them.
Well, that's just one example of what happens when we have abandoned houses in our community, when nobody's living in a property.
No, it's been going on even when they was living there, people have always dumped their things there.
Again, I know the per, the previous tenants, I've met them personally on, on many occasions, I don't think we can say that they were very good stewards of the property in any matter. But my point is the principle. If nobody's living in a house, it's easy for people to come dump trash on the, on the property. That's the reason that we have a nuisance abatement process, because it's a waterfall effect. If a house is abandoned, if a house isn't being cared for, more people come and dump their trash on there. So you're actually experiencing the very reason why we have these nuisance abatement laws, because it turns out, if you're living in a house, I don't know about you, but I know about me, they wouldn't dump trash in my yard more than once or twice, and I'd be sitting out there, you know, with a folding chair at two in the morning when they came by the next time. And, and when nobody's living there, that makes it hard to enforce that stuff. But in the meantime.
Too much the police is sitting there.
In the meantime, obviously, the, the Public Works Department, you know, you can call and let them know that there's illegal dumping going on, on your street, you can notify the police department that there's legal dumping going on there, and they can maybe try to patrol it a little more. And hopefully, the challenge with that is, you got to catch them in the act, you got to actually catch them.
Well, I do know one who's doing it, the lady across the street, she puts her physical trash back there.
Call the authorities.
Yeah, call them when they do that.
I mean, yeah. Okay, well, thank y'all for listening.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is, oh, I'm sorry.
We need to take a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion, we table this for thirty days.
Second.
Already discussed. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for thirty days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for thirty days.
Our next item, there's no council action that will be taken regarding this resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at twenty-three oh eight Scenic Drive in District Seven, because there is a new owner. Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens for demolition on property located at one twelve Twenty-first Street North in District One, this is Christopher E. Ford, John D. Williams, and First Franklin Financial Corporation being the last known owners, and the amount is two thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and forty cent. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next abatement lien for demolition on property located at two twelve Keelan Road in District One, and this is the estate of Jordan Russell and Lizzie Russell, Evelyn Russell, and certain mortgage in favor of the City of Gaston being the last known owners. The amount is three thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and forty cent. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for demolition on property at two oh five New York Avenue, District One, this is wrong, it was Jenkins, Salita Angela and Diamond Road being the last known owners. The amount is two thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cent. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone like to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens for demolition on property located at two oh seven New York Avenue in District One, this is FNA NPLLC writer redemption of Joseph Michael Giles and State of Alabama being the last known owners, and the amount is three thousand ninety-one dollars and forty cent. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our last, our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for demolition on property at two seventeen Morningview Drive in District Two, Willie Bell Kirkland and her heirs deceased being the last known owners, and the amount is two thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty cent. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is the items nineteen through twenty-one, then our next three items, and their resolution approving agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment for the twenty-twenty summer concert series to be held at the Amphitheater after First Fridays events. The first one is Pandora Box, June the fifth, three thousand eight hundred dollars. The next one is Hank Williams Junior Tribute, July third, three thousand dollars. And Dr. Zar, Amazing Funk Monster, September the fourth, is four thousand dollars. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt all three resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to hear you say Dr. Zar's Amazing Funk Monster one more time before we pass.
They didn't put the other name down for Hank Williams. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three.
Our next resolution is authorizing agreement with L R Y Media Group, and this is for a series of events known as the Gaston Music Series to be held at the venue at the Cousin Landing, and the cost is ten thousand dollars per event. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with F L W LLC and Greater Gaston Area Tourism, and this is the Greater Gaston Area Tourism is partnering with the city to sponsor a fishing tournament that will take place May the seventh through the ninth, 2020. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any new business? Department Reports Committee boards, we have, is Mr. Bud Hall or Mr. Renza Avery here?
I appreciate it.
All right, they have a recognition, I think there's a sports team that won in Mobile and just giving them a recognition. I thought maybe they'd bring the team.
Thank you, we didn't bring the team, maybe we can bring them after we win this state championship. What I want to do is just, we wanted to come to you guys and thank you first for everything that you've done for the team. The Gaston City High School bowling team competed in the North Regional this past weekend. It's an eight-member team, and I, I know some of you are not familiar with the setup on how bowling works, but you have to really bowl at the top of your game to, to achieve and compete in this tournament, and we finished third, which automatically qualifies us for the state tournament this Thursday and Friday in, at Pelham Lanes in Oak Mountain. The, the boys team at Gaston City, this is their sixth year in a row to qualify for the state finals, and this is the first time we've had an opportunity to get out and recognize these young men. And anytime you can get things in the community like this, positive of that nature, you got young men making achievements, and it leaps and bounds like these young men have accomplished, it needs to be recognized. Mr. Hall could not make it, he is the boys' coach, and I assist him, and I'm also the girls' coach there, but we wanted to make sure that somebody came here to recognize these young men, because their accomplishments are, are huge compared to the other hundreds of teams that want to be in that same position that they're in. But we wanted to come and make sure that the people in Gaston knew that next Thursday at twelve, at Oak Mountain Lanes, our, our boys will be competing. They've done a great job being representatives of the City of Gaston, and we want to make sure the people in Gaston is aware of it. And we want to invite you all to come out, show them the support that they deserve, and then hopefully we can carry that over into Friday into the tournament portion of it and, and make the city even prouder by bringing home our first state championship. And this group of young men have a, have a very good chance to do that. The scores that they bowled this past weekend on the state level was, I believe it was the third highest score in the state out of sixty-four teams that bowled. So, I mean, they, I mean, speaks for itself. So if you get an opportunity, or if you know any of the bowlers, you see them, you see Mr. Hall, and you know, pat them on the back, because they've done a great job, and they've, they've done the city well.
How many are on the team?
There are eight bowlers, I didn't know if I had enough time, I can recognize each one of them. The captain on the team is a young man named Tommy Butler, we also have a young man by the name of Dakota Jones, we have Mr. Richard Higgins, Dakota Jones, I'm sorry, Mr. Jeremiah Watts is a member of the team, my grandson Elijah Avery is a member of this team, there are Jacob and Derek Henson also members of the team, and the last member's name is Nicholas Marks. These young men have done a very good job, and like I said, if you're aware of them, you know them, pat them on the back, and tell them job well done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and hopefully next week we can come back and discuss state championship we just won.
Coach Avery, if you would, our media groups typically sit up front here, so if you want to holler at them before you leave, they may be interested in getting some information as well.
There are, the Gaston Times is, the Gaston Times, Mr. Couch is already, I spoke with him actually yesterday, and he's going to be there himself to take pictures, and, and they, they do a pretty good job of covering us.
Hey now, hold on, don't, don't give them too much credit.
I, I went, I went, I don't want to be mean, they do, they do a pretty good job of covering us, but they could do better.
Yes, there you go, there you go.
They could do better, they could have had somebody down there when we, we had two young men bowl, two forty-seven.
Wow.
And. I mean, it's been nice, somebody that had been there to click, click, you know. But like I said, either, either way, these young men deserve our support, they deserve the support of the city, and we appreciate an opportunity to get the word out there.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have five minutes, remarks from the mayor and council. We'll start over here with Mr. Councilman Reed.
Ooh, very good. I just want to let everybody know that the ordinance of tethering is now in the process of being finalized, since we get through the legal end and a few things from other cities in. We'll be bringing that up for the council probably next week or the next, it's something we need to really get on. Litter is very much alive in the city of Gaston, Alabama. Lady was talking about dumping in her yard, I can appreciate that, my ditch is filled about every week. But we have one lady in my district, Lisa Osborne, who is, I took a picture this morning, four more sacks of garbage trash that she's picked up, and I'm talking about Monday, Martin Luther King holiday, she was out working, it was twenty-something degrees, and that lady was picking up trash. I think she's putting up for a pretty good example of what everybody else in this city ought to be doing themselves. Police your area, and we won't have a problem with litter. And eventually, if we keep the enforcement going, we can bring an end to this, I hope. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Cannon.
Thank you, Council President, I just want to tell everybody that leaf season is still going strong, we start picking up leaves, we'll probably be doing that for the next six or eight more weeks. If you'll help us out and I'll put your limbs and stuff in the leaf piles, put them separate, that will make the leaf season go a lot quicker. And also, if you bag them, call five four nine four seven oh three and tell them, and they'll get those leaf bags quicker this time. That's all I have.
Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I just want to address the, the first action we took today with the amendment of the smoking ordinance to allow for a hookah bar. A resident of District Five approached me about this business model, it's something that's becoming more common in larger communities, it's something that oftentimes is, is focused around a casual environment, but also has some heritage in people's religious backgrounds or ethnic backgrounds. So it's something that's pretty common in, in several communities around here, so we took some language from a neighboring community that allowed hookah bars and introduced it into ours. So there are obviously still restrictions on how those operations can, can conduct business on a daily basis. And now the responsibility falls on the, on the future business owners to execute and follow these, these guidelines. So thank you for the council for working with me on that, I know that's something that was not necessarily common in day-to-day business, so I appreciate you guys being understanding of that. Also, I just want to clarify something, because I got a lot of questions about an article in the paper about this music series with L R Y M G and the, and the discussion that happened in pre-council about that. Just want to clarify, we do this quite often, just like with the summer concert series at the Amphitheater, where we partner with a third party to book some musical acts, and we provide that as a service to the community as part of the First Friday festivities. This is really just an extension of that, it's a third-party group that we're working with to, for, to book some, some acts at the venue to provide some sort of a, a public service with, as part of an extension of that concert series. And we do give them an allotment of money upfront for each concert, and then we receive a portion of the ticket sales back off of those concerts. So that, that was the, the structure of that agreement. And then, again, I just want to say, congratulations, I actually was going to take the opportunity to recognize the bowling team already, because I read that article last week in the paper, and man, six times in a row qualifying for the state tournament is very, very impressive. There aren't very many teams in any athletic extracurricular activity in this town that has that kind of record. So congratulations to those young men, and also on a personal level, Coach, the hook just hit in there, if we can get together afterwards, I'll take any pointers you have, can't get it to turn. And on the same note, recognizing young men and women in the community, I want to recognize specifically Madeline and Dylan Manchin, their, their parents are the owners of Gadrock, the, the micro climbing gym here in town. They both qualified for a regional climbing competition in Florida a few weeks ago, they both went down and climbed this weekend, and Dylan actually ended up qualifying for the national indoor climbing competition in Bend, Oregon. I think he'll be leaving in the next week or so to head out there to represent the City of Gaston in Bend, Oregon at the national climbing competition. of Gaston in Bend, Oregon at the national climbing competition, so kudos to those two young members of our community for their success as well. Thank you.
Councilman Beck.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Last week, we had a pretty big rain event, some storms, and in District Four, we had some trees down, and some storm drains were stopped up and overflowing, and I'd like to thank Mike Hilton and all the folks in Public Works for coming out, this was after five o'clock event, obviously, and they came out and did what needed to be done and took care of things so roads could be safe and passages could be done, and they did that in the rain and in the storm, so thank you, Public Works, for what you do, and that happens all the time, this is just a specific incident that happened in my district that I wanted to tell them thank you for helping. And also, as we're talking about our young people, we had a young lady from Gaston City High School compete in Montgomery with probably around sixty other young ladies in a program called the Distinguished Young Women Program, years ago, it used to be called the Junior Miss Program, and McCain Foster, who was a senior at Gaston City High School, finished in the top eight and also was awarded three different scholarships within the competition. It was a very good week for her, she worked very, very hard prior to going to Montgomery, and just want to give a shout of congratulations to McCain Foster and her family for the work that she did and for the success that she had, she really set the bar high for other girls coming behind her, and it was just a really good weekend, and that's a great event, it really promotes young women and helps to give scholarships to those that can achieve that, so thank you to them. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes, Madam President, I just want to say congratulations to W M G J radio station for putting on the thirty-fifth annual Martin Luther King Program last night, we had a great turnout, it was very nice, and also I want to give a shout out to the Gaston Power and Initiative Board for putting on our fourth annual Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast, it was also a wonderful event, and if you missed it, you really missed the treat. And thanks to Dr., we'll call him Dr. Reddick, but Mr. Reddick, he gave the keynote speech last night, and to Reverend Earl Dudley for giving the keynote speech for the prayer breakfast, and I mean, I tell you, we had a really good time, and I just want to thank the community for coming out, and it was very cold, but the community showed up, and they showed out, and thank you to the kids, that choir last night was awesome, I mean, just awesome, so thank you so much.
Councilman Worthy.
Thank you, Madam President, I'll reiterate the point about the MLK events, it's always good to see the turnout, and again, the prayer breakfast, the event at Mount Pilgrim, and of course, I think Walnut Park, some students at Walnut Park actually put on a play yesterday, so, and I think Quality of Life typically does a volunteer event on that holiday, so again, it's good to see some local activity associated with that holiday, that's important. I think one of the themes that continually exists with the holiday is it's a day on and not a day off, so I think we'd be well served to continue to drive that theme. The nuisance abatement activity that we discussed this morning, you know, here's just an example of the impact, and again, there are other things that I could highlight, but an example of the impact is the total dollars in terms of demolition liens that we voted on today was about fourteen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. So in assessment terms, that means that the labor and effort relative to city resources that was devoted to demolishing those properties was a little bit over fourteen thousand dollars worth, and the sad part is we are not likely to secure a nickel of that back because those properties have been demolished, so there's no, really no clear path towards any property taxes as it relates to that. And so, and we also have essentially taken city resources away from other things like leaf pickup, like, you know, downed tree recovery and things of that nature, so just please understand, you know, this is a big problem, not just in our city, but it's a big problem in cities across the state and across the country. There is a very, there's a declining awareness on the part of young adults relative to their responsibilities as it relates to property. You know, many young adults just don't understand that if you live in a house or own a house, property taxes have to be paid, and when the responsible heir passes away, for whatever reason, that gets lost, and we end up hearing many of the cases that we get on a weekly basis, so, you know, I don't know if me batting my gums about it is going to help one iota, but it's really something that we should address as a community because we're continually tying up your tax dollars dealing with people just neglecting personal property and real property, so please be mindful of that and help where you can as an individual citizen. I'll be talking more later, not today, of course, but we, you know, the legal municipalities has put together a pamphlet, and I'm holding just an early version of it, we're finding very, I mean, we're finding that more and more we are encountering adults who don't understand how municipal government works. The only time they show up is if somebody's dumping trash in their yard, or if their neighbor is being, has a condemned property, but then after that, you know, you don't hear from them, and it's why the, you know, the Curly Duramuses of the world and the other folks that actually show up on a regular basis and are here, you know, we appreciate them so much because, you know, it's not about them, you know, being active contributors, the responsibility that we have as elected officials is to conduct business in public. And so, you know, now if we're having a public hearing, that's exactly what that is, that's us hearing from the public, but in terms of just our meetings, you know, we have a responsibility to conduct our meetings in public view, and so, again, you'll be hearing more about these, you know, we're going to print several of them and try to make them available, Ms. Hardwick does a great job in the school systems already, but we're going to try to add to it by giving her copies of this, and again, making this stuff available to the public. A couple of quick items before I hand it out to the mayor, but please be mindful of a couple of pieces of legislation, as many of you know, the state legislature will go into session here soon, in February, and they'll take up all manner of business, but a couple of things that you're going to hear about is small cell development. There is a preemptive effort to take away many of the rights that we have as cities, and this is one of them, the wireless community is pushing 5G technology, which is good, that's going to be good for all of us, but the downside to that is they want to do that by taking away cities constitutional right to govern what goes in our right of ways. They basically want to take that away from us and be able to do what it is they want to do in terms of where to put the equipment, where to put towers and things of that nature, and you don't want that because you lose a voice. The beauty of these guys up here is that with us, you see us in Walmart, Dollar General, and you see us here every Tuesday, and if you've got an issue, you can get to us, you can get to, because you know where we're going to be every Tuesday. When it gets to the state level, you may never see your state representative, and so you lose the ability to address that issue. So again, we want to be, we want to be sure to make sure that we don't lose that voice, so if you've got an enroll to a state representative, make sure you get in their ear and let them know that that's important to you. Be mindful of Senate Bill two thirty-six, that's the medical marijuana bill, that's a mess, if, I mean, I don't know how else to put it, the way it stands right now, it is a, it's a bloody mess, because it's going to basically take, we won't have, from a police perspective, from a local legislative perspective, we won't have any say over how that gets done, you're going to have non-pharmacy people dictating and dispensing CBD and other medical marijuana, there's provisions in there that allow people to walk around with at least seven times their prescription, I mean, it's all kinds of ridiculous, and so I would ask that people get educated on what that bill entails and speak your mind. Now, if you're for medical marijuana, that's a different animal, but I can tell you that it creates a, you know, creates a whole swath of issues for a city and private business because now we've got to figure out how we do our hiring processes, are we required to hire people who are high, essentially? If we're hiring bus drivers, do we hire high bus drivers? And so there are a number of issues that we've got to consider as it relates to that. And of course, many of you may know, this is not necessarily a city issue, but it's definitely a statewide and a community issue. A D M on Valentine's Day, February fourteenth, will be voting, they'll have their meeting, and that's the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, they'll have their meeting, and they'll vote on the local sludge dumping legislation. Now, for most of us in incorporated areas of the city of Gaston, that's not as much of an issue because, again, we don't have people dumping next to our homes, but the issue is that poultry companies and companies that ship waste from the north to the south right now aren't regulated at a sufficient level in terms of where they can dump, and so there are people in our communities that are having to deal with the smell and all manner of pollution as it relates to that, so again, just please be mindful of those things, track them in as much as you can, and make sure that you say your piece as it relates to that. The last thing I have, Madam President, is I do want to wish, or I recognize my mother who's here, she's been, she's been under the weather for the last few weeks, so it's just good to see her out, so I do want to recognize her, and I do want to also wish my father a happy birthday, today is his birthday, and he is, he's almost as old as the mayor, he's sixty, sixty-eight today, so again, I do want to wish him a happy birthday, and that's it, thank you.
Mayor.
Some of the things Derrick was just talking about, we really do need to pay attention because you get people elected locally, and when they get to Montgomery, it's sort of like they lose their mind, and I'm not being ugly, but they pass all this stuff, and it rolls downhill and we end up with it. And one thing we've discussed a good bit this morning, people going around and dumping things in other people's yard or vacant houses, or on the median, just like in some of the places around here, set out a bunch of furniture and stuff, and if you see that happening, just jot down a tag number and call City Hall because we need to clean our place up, you know, we have a really neat city, and we've got a lot of good things going on, but people are just too sorry to pay the garbage bill or do whatever, just go dump it somewhere in somebody's yard or a vacant house, I just have a real problem with that, and it seems like that's getting more predominant all the time, so if you see that going on, write it down and give us an address or a tag number, and we'll see if we can take care of that. Thank you.
Okay, District One will have a meeting January the twenty-seventh, we'll be talking about various streets that's going to be paved, so Mr. Heath Williamson will be there. I'd also like to recognize, I saw Curly in the paper, and that's a part of a community service. One of the things that I picked up yesterday from breakfast is that in a prayer, it says we come here every year, say the same thing, but we need to put our boots to work, we need to put our actions where our mouth is, and so it should be a day of community service, just not talking, but also a day of community service. I think Mr. Avery, Larry Avery, talked about in his community program that they're going to be having a cleanup day, which would coincide with what we've been talking about, people need to be educated that you need to, you know, clean up your own place. I always was taught that charity starts at home and then it spreads abroad. There are so many things out there to help our young people, we just had recognition of big brothers, big sisters, we just had recognition of our bowling team, so they need to see action from us, so I'm just challenging you, put your boots to work, stop talking so much, complaining, being negative, but get involved, go into schools, go into communities, if you see paper on the streets, pick it up, if you see somebody throwing it out, don't be scared, take the tag number down, as I was told, and go file a little warrant against them, that's the only way that we're going to change things, as I said earlier, and I keep saying it, that only God can change the hearts of men and women, nothing we legislate up here is going to change people, they have to start within themselves, so if nothing else, I call for adjournment.